Hi, I'm Robin Schulz for the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
What's today's date? November 20th, Thursday, work session to orders. Apologize for the delay. We had a bit of a medical emergency and asked that you keep Councilman McClintock in your prayers. I think he's going to be okay, but we'll continue on. So Monday night, we'll have payment of bills, the minutes, and then Resolution Number 866625 to reappoint a member to the Library Board. This will be the reappointment of Jeff Rogers to serve a full term. Jeff had taken over a partial term for Hal Humphrey, who had stepped off. He'll be fulfilling a full term. Then Resolution Number 867325, Resolution approving account information for Regions Bank, Ms. Dickerson.
This adds or continues to have Casey Middlebrooks, the mayor, and myself as the signers, and adds Melinda Lopez, the CFO, to be the custodian of funds for these accounts.
Very good. Any questions from council on that? All right. Resolution Number 866725, approving alcohol license for ARA Enterprises doing business as Desi Twist. Ms. Dickerson.
There are no issues from the Police Department or Planning Department on this request.
Okay. Any questions on this resolution? Moving down, Resolution Number 866825, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Alabama Fire College. Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker, while you're walking down, we'll go ahead and tackle that along with Resolution Number 866925, authorizing for a contract with International Association of Chiefs of Police to conduct a police promotional assessment for sergeant and lieutenant.
Yes. So we, as it stated, we need to permission to execute that agreement for the testing for the fire engineer position. And then the second one, of course, to execute the agreement for the promotion for police sergeants and police lieutenants.
Very well. Any questions on either of those items?
Yes, sir. Is it just time for those lists to expire?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Resolution Number 867025, authorizing execution of Alabama Power Company pole attachment agreement and authorizing the mayor execute the unmetered billing agreement for Christmas lights. Ms. Rosemary, is she here? No. Basically, this just gives permission for us to utilize the pole, Alabama Power poles, put up Christmas lights, and pay them for the unmetered service. Is that correct, Ms. Grimes? Any questions on that? All right. Number nine, Resolution Number 867125, Resolution amending the budget for the fiscal year for Bluff Park renovation project. Ms. Cobal. Mr. Jaeger, you have anything to add?
I thought he was going to come up here with me, but I guess not. It's okay. So this is our playground project that is $160,000 approved project, and we've had several community engagement meetings, including feedback from children recently in September. So we've worked through the final designs and added some enhanced accessibility features, which we need a little bit of extra money to do so. We have $58,560 in a Moss Rock Preserve account that's been in there for a little while to build new bridges. Those bridges have been washed out for several years, and it does not prohibit anybody to be able to enjoy the preserve. So we feel like it's a priority to go ahead and get this playground project done for the community. And this week at the park board meeting, they approved the final design and were in agreement for the funds to be moved from the Moss Rock account.
And what that does is we're not spending any new money. We're just reallocating money that we already have, so there will be no negative impact to our overall budget.
Very well. Any questions?
Mr. President, Ms. Cobal, you think we'll be coming back for more funding for those bridges in the next budget?
I do not.
Okay.
Very well. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to Resolution 867225, accepting change orders for Fire Station One. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. I brought Matt Griffin with me, just in case we have some questions. He's the architect for Fire Station One project. So what we have in front of us is really just an AIA document that really the mayor needs to sign off on. So that would accept change orders 1 through 20, all of which were contingency, built into the contingency allowance for the project, minus the $11,416.83. So that is the amount that this would take and elevate the cost of that project by. So there will be a budget amendment at some point, but we need the approval first for the change orders.
Do we have identified where the $11,000 are going to come from?
At this point, we have not.
We have not?
I will also point out that we are in liquidated damages on this project. So to the tune of, it should have been done contractually September 1st, and we're collecting at $500 a day. So that $11,000 number is going to be covered by the liquidated damages, or could be covered by the liquidated damages. There may be some more change orders that come in just for some small equipment, whatever. But we think it'll be about a wash when we find like it done.
Any questions?
Mr. President, do you have an anticipated date that the building would be turned over to the city?
Latest that we have heard from the contractor is early December. I don't know that I believe that date. I would count on 1st of the year.
There's not going to be an additional traffic light put up there, is there?
No, sir, there's not. There'll be coordination with the two existing traffic lights.
Very good.
Any further questions? Very well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have ordinance number 252683, an ordinance to adopt a procedure for the appointment of the city attorney and provision of other legal services. Ms. Dickerson. That skipped 11. I sure did. I'm sorry about that. Thank you. Y'all usually do. Resolution Number 867425, Resolution approving intervention in litigation. Mr. Waldrick.
Yes, that's, excuse me, that's the litigation that's presently pending in Montgomery County, filed initially by Tuscaloosa. Mount Brook was joined in. The people on the other side are all the county commissions, as all of Minnesota's parties, we understand that Montgomery, City of Montgomery, has joined as plaintiffs. And we listed the numbers on this, and it's in Hoover's interest to be on the side of the plaintiffs. And if we are successful in the challenge, it'll be several million dollars if we become a plaintiff, and we're not getting any. So what we want to do is just authorize us to intervene. We'll do that. We don't intend on spending much time, if any, with it. We'll give copies of the pleadings. If we're asked to do something, we will, but we'll see Green is representing Tuscaloosa. And he's done an excellent job, and no sense in reinviting the will.
Very good. Just naming ourselves as a plaintiff, basically, joining in. Any questions on this item?
Mr. Waldrick, who will be handling the legal fees for our entry?
Will be handling the legal what?
Legal fees for Hoover's entry into the litigation.
It'd be Wayne Morris. He'll be filing the notice for this thing. I think you're going to, I'm sorry.
Whatever legal fees will be nominal. We don't intend to participate. We just intend to participate if we get some money.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Now moving on to ordinance 252683, to adopt procedure for the appointment of city attorney and provision of other legal services.
This is for the council to determine and approve reasonable compensation for the city attorney and any other attorneys for services performed.
Very well. Ordinance number 252684, I'm sorry, were there any questions regarding that? 252684, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Shelby County Chief Bentley. This is associated with providing emergency medical transport services.
Yes, sir. As you all know, we offer automatic aid, mutual aid for departments all around us. This is something that Shelby County started, I think, three years ago, and they give agencies, fire department agencies that provide EMS transports, transport capability, $1,000 per square mile. And so the city of Hoover has almost 24 square miles in Shelby County, and so that's what this is about. This money is earmarked for EMS supplies, fuel, and non-consumables, and so that's what this agreement is for. I think this is our third year, maybe our fourth year.
Any questions regarding this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Chief, has any of your personnel been asked to respond to an area that was not already protected by Fire District? It was just like an open county area?
We could be called to those areas, but we have not at this point. Shelby County does a really good job. They have transport capabilities throughout the county, and there are county ambulances that respond. But primarily, our responsibility would be to respond to incidents with North Shelby, Cohaba Valley, Chelsea, and places like that, parts of Pelham, places like that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Chief. We will have a public hearing for Resolution 862525, granting conditional use approval for the construction of pickleball courts located at One Country Club Drive in Inverness. Mr. Martin.
Yes, council. This particular item was taken up by the Planning Commission at their October meeting, and the recommendation is a positive one coming from the Planning Commission with conditions. They include to modify previously approved conditions to read that lighting and use of all the courts is restricted to the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., to modify previously approved conditions to read that maintenance with power equipment is restricted to 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., that new lighting on the site be focused downward on playing surfaces and shielded to prevent light leaving the site, that MS4 requirements for the site are met to the satisfaction of the city engineer, which my understanding is they are meeting those with the site's civil plans that are under review at this time. And then just to note all other comments, approved in the 2008 conditional use remain were not in conflict with new conditions. Just long and short, there was an area on the previously approved tennis court sector of the Inverness Country Club that was not built out, but was anticipated to be tennis courts. They are wanting to convert that area into additional pickleball courts for the country club.
I'm sure they'll get a whole lot of use out of that.
Sure they will.
Any further questions from Mr. Martin on that issue? Thank you. It is not on the agenda, but we will amend the agenda for Monday night to also include the mayor had just received a contract to purchase the 3021 building. Mr. Waldrick, can you inform us on that?
That's an offer. We met with the potential purchaser this week, earlier this week, the mayor. And that's a building that we did not have an appraisal for. It was acquired a couple of years ago, cost $1,900,000. The proposed purchaser is offering what we paid, $1,900,000. We're responsible for a $25,000 brokerage fee, if it comes from our part. We can divide the other costs equally. It does have a phase one environmental that they'll have to pay for, that's only thing that might take some time. So got a 90-day term with it. They're putting a $5,000 in earnest money that's not in front of them. The only change that we're suggesting is that we put a break clause in that says that if someone, in our sole opinion, makes us an offer that's better than that, that once we notify them, they have to agree to close with no contingency within 48 hours. Other than that, we recommend that we proceed.
Okay. Very well. Any questions concerning this sale?
Yeah, the money that they're going to take is going to run better than a million dollars. And I guess we can go and talk about the purpose of it.
I can speak a little bit.
It's going to be a medical facility.
I can speak a little bit about, the city originally purchased this building because we were trying to make space for the expansion of PSC for NCFI, and then Riverwalk came along. And now we have a building that basically we have no need for. So getting the money back for what we paid for it, cutting bait, basically, so.
They're going to spend about $2.5 million to renovate it themselves.
That's right. Great facility to add to Hoover. Any further questions? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Waldrick, the 48 hours, would that be to close at their fee, at the price that they had given, or would they have to match?
No, that would be the price that they have in the contract.
Very good.
That's pretty standard. $5,000 is just not a lot of money to keep property tied up for 90 days. We haven't had any, what I call tire kickers, coming around looking at this property, so we think it's a good value. But let's say, excuse me, as I discussed with the president before the meeting, we could have gone into executive session, but this is a situation that I don't think it really helps to go in executive session. It may be that somebody listening to this or reading about it in the media may say, "Well, I didn't know that was for sale. We can go down there and get it for $2 million," you know, or whatever. So I think it is really in our interest to discuss it openly, let people know that we've got a contract, we can break that contract with 48 hours' notice so that we can go to somebody else and make us a better deal.
Very good. We'll take that up on Monday night.
Yeah, let me say this to you, if they spend the $2 million, as a rule of thumb, about 40% of that's going to be building materials. So you're going to get more, you're going to get more sales tax back from the building than you're paying in the brokerage fee.
As I understand it, the city currently owns it. We don't, do we pay property tax on that?
We don't.
So there'll be more property tax coming back from the police.
That's correct. The property tax, at the previous assessment, when we bought it, was $55,000 a year. So at about an 80-20 split with the board, that gives the city around $11,000 and about $44,000 to the board. So this will be ongoing income that will come to the city.
Very good. Any further comments? One other thing I want to get the temperature of the council. We all received an email giving a briefing of FIFA to be a host city, a host team, team host city for FIFA World Cup. Now, you all read those, that briefing, and what is the temperature of the council? Do we move forward?
Scott is here. He's the author of the memo, if you have any questions for him.
Scott, would you mind giving us just a brief rundown of your assessment?
Counsel, as I went through that document, one thing that is glaring, and I just sort of have to say it this way.
Scott, you may want to identify what FIFA is for those that don't know.
FIFA is the international organization that sponsors the World Cup of soccer, and their practice sessions are all over the place. And so this would, this concept, this proposal was in Shelby County, I believe they passed on it, and the idea, the background information, this is the extent of my knowledge on the background information, is that it came to Hoover as a potential host city because of that. And so it comes to you based upon the same framework of the document that Shelby County was introduced to. So, but this, the glaring thing in this document is, make no mistake, FIFA is in charge in the event that you agree to be a host city. You will assume all costs for transport, safety, just anything that FIFA thinks is necessary to accommodate their teams, travel to and from places, bus transportation, excuse me, organizing transport, if necessary, for citizens to visit the host team practices and so forth. But anyway, to sum it all up, you have a certain amount of financial liability as it relates to these documents. You have the agreement, and then you have the standards that FIFA puts in place. And so with that, with that said, your identified benefit in the documents is limited. There's some, there's legal liability as it relates to all of the things I just mentioned. Obviously, you would have some liability in far as transporting, obviously, public safety issues, you know, potential medical issues, emergency calls, all the above, as it relates to you being the host city. So those liabilities will be in place. You'll have some cost, but there's no reimbursement from FIFA. So you would just be banking as a city, you would just be banking on the indirect cost at this point, which are not quantifiable because there hasn't been enough time and cost-benefit analysis done. So that's where it is at this point. Are there specific questions as it relates to the document?
Well, just the document that I read, so the city of Hoover could not claim to be associated with FIFA, correct?
They have very stringent policies as it relates to the protection of the FIFA brand, very stringent. You cannot advertise yourself as a partner with FIFA. You can't do that. If you do, FIFA will tell you how to do it. And you can't, you can say, "We are a host city," or FIFA, or something to that effect, but you got to be very, very careful of how you use their trademark brand, if you will. And so, and all of that has to be pre-certified by FIFA.
For clarification, this isn't about hosting actual tournament games. This is more about hosting a practice team here in our city as a practice for the World Cup.
Two points about your question. Yes, it's about practices. There is a looming question as to where, because the other, the locations were originally identified for Shelby County locations and not necessarily in the city location. So that's a question I was not able to obtain. There hasn't been enough time to have a dialogue with that entity and to identify additional potential practice locations in the city.
So let me, let's step back for just a minute.
Sure.
How this all started. This all started last week when we got a document, Parks and Rec got a document, Aaron got a document, that Shelby County was passing on this being a host. It's 200 and how many pages?
The FIFA requirements are 250 pages, plus the contract is at least a dozen pages, if not more.
And we were then asked to make a decision within a couple of days on that.
Yes, sir.
And at that point, it was forwarded to you because the, there was one entity that was kind of wanting this in the city of Hoover, but there was no benefit financially for the city of Hoover. Is that correct?
There's no direct benefit that I can see, looking through that document. There's, you know, you can assume from any economic event that there's a indirect benefit of sorts, you know, people coming, spending their tax dollars, but at this point, there's no way for me to quantify that amount. And I would also add to that page number that you were talking about, referenced in the documents are other FIFA requirements that you can only see online. So that, it requires someone like me to go online and confirm that they match the document itself, so.
And then there was a, we had to make a decision within a certain period of time, or they were going to pass on us. And it was just not, they weren't giving us enough time to really digest the entire package. Would that be fair?
Oh, absolutely fair.
Yeah. I guess my question tonight, Charlie, is, we're not voting on this tonight, but can, can we, I guess...
Well, if you don't put it on the agenda, the time runs out. Do some of the second, I think, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So if you don't put it on the agenda, unless you have a special meeting and somebody, you know, has an epiphany and decides they want to do this, then it's just going to go away. You do not have to take a vote to say, "We're not going to do this."
You are correct.
It will expire, it will expire by the terms of the offer.
Got you. Okay.
Are they looking at the Met as a possible practice site?
I wish I could answer that. I just don't know. They would, it would seem to be...
I could answer that. No, they're not.
Okay.
They, it was, we are strictly a place for them to live, but the practice would be in Shelby County, in a field in Shelby County, not in the city of Hoover. So it's just a place for them to reside while they are doing everything outside of the city of Hoover.
And that's consistent with the way the document reads, even though it's catered to Shelby County as being the host, but the document still reads as those two fields will be the practice fields.
Is Shelby County willing to participate?
No, they passed. No, they passed.
Well, but if we were assigned, they would still get...
They would get to be the place where they practice, but that's the extent of it.
But then yet Shelby County would not assist us
That's correct.
...with the cost of providing those services.
That is correct.
So they're going to get their cake and eat it, too. And I like all the commissioners on Shelby County.
Oh, they're awesome. They're great.
Yeah, they're great people.
I don't think it's a cake. I think it's more of a cupcake.
Oh, okay. I don't know, depending if you get it for free.
I think taking the temperature of this body, personally, I'm going to leave this off the agenda, unless two council members contact me to add it, it will not be on Monday night's agenda. Thanks, Scott. Any further questions from council? With that, we're adjourned. Thank you. Yes, sir, Ms. May.
I want to thank the Fire Department Chief Bentley. Yesterday, for the first time in my life, I was stuck in the elevator in City Hall, and I called 911 and the Fire Department. I could hear sirens coming, and after about 20 minutes, I was released, freed. But prior to that, Chief Bentley did call me and said that, you know, "Our guys are there, we'll get you out." And I said, "Well, I hear them out here, but they're not having, you know, really good luck right now." I was late to an interview with Channel 42, so they ended up doing a little interview with me about it, and it aired today, if you see it, it's pretty funny. But I did tell the chief when he called me in the elevator, that it was me and my bottle of water. I told him, I said, "Well, I hope they do get me out quick because your budget certainly hinges on that." So thank you for bringing me to save my life. Let me say this directly, we're truly sorry you're late for here.
Take the stairs, people. Take the stairs.
Mr. President, I will not be here Monday night, but Johnny Brunson, Johnny, y'all have met Johnny before. He'll be here. You'll be in much better hands with Johnny than you would be with me, so.
would be with me, so.